It is 7:02 and I hereby call to order the February 2016 Meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. As you can see, we are three tonight. Deputy Mayor Major could not be with us. We will begin with a Village Clerk's Report. Clerk Bruno, please.
The Clerk's Office has sold 416 trash tags. We processed two K rolls. I had the pleasure of attending one Planning Board Workshop and also one Planning Board Meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes in your binder. There's January 20th Regular Board Meeting and the February 10th Board Workshop. There are minutes from that workshop because the Board actually took an action at that workshop, which was to create a temporary clerical assistant position, which is essentially to create a position so that the person who will be the next court clerk can begin training. So obviously you have a time when this trainee is not court clerk yet. They actually need a position to be put in, so that's what that is. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I approve the minutes.
That was Trustee Ezraudi. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Schneider, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are accepted. Moving on to the Treasurer's Report, which I have here. The Treasurer's Report this month, out of the General Fund, $43,703.2. Out of the Water Fund, $7,340.74. Out of the Sewer Fund, $7,042.3. And out of the Trust and Agency, $525. For a total of $58,610.79. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
That was Schneider. And then Ezraudi, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Treasurer's Report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was...
The other way around.
The other way around, yeah. We're gonna be doing this all night.
I was gonna say.
You got it? Okay, good.
I was gonna go all night.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Zoner Report. Trustee Ezraudi, please. I see it's rather robust this month.
It is. From January 15th to February 16th, our CEO issued two building permits, seven inspections, two certificates of completion, and he addressed three complaints. The complaints included concerns about unmaintained landscapes, a fire that occurred in the laundromat, and the redress on that is to make sure that there is the appropriate correction of issues in the back of the dryers, which caused a fire in the dryers.
Upgrade in the sheetrock.
And upgraded in the sheetrock. And a letter was sent to a property on North Road, which has a number of violations. Building permits were issued to... Actually, there were two building permits for one property and one for another property. One on Kidd Lane Rear and the other on 29 Broadway. And then a lot of inspections here, including one for framing footing drains, certificate of occupancy at Calendar House, certificates of completion for... I don't know what they were. Two passed and one failed. And a safety inspection for one North Road, which is the laundromat. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraudi. Correspondence, we did have a letter this month from a resident about water service to the property. That letter's been distributed to the trustees. Right, everyone on top of that? And you're aware of the issues of that situation. Hopefully they will be speedily resolved. Moving on to public comment on agenda items this month. Budget modifications, $600 is going from planning to zoning. Nine cents is going from contingency to debt service on the bonds that did the firehouse... Excuse me, the building repairs, the elevator, a year and a half ago or so.
I'm trying to straighten that out.
Yes. Second thing is to set a public hearing for the overriding of the tax cap. So first thing I want to say is, we hope we don't have to override the tax cap. The tax cap is .12% this year, which in the Village of Tivoli means we can raise about $550 higher than what we did last year.
Which given there are 550 residents and probably 450 taxpayers, if we did.
Right.
If we stayed injured, it would be no more than a dollar.
Right. Now, passing this tax cap override law is something that the Village has done at least the last four years. We've never had to use it, but if you get to the 11th hour and you gotta adopt your budget and you can't make it work, if you don't have this law, then you can't raise it. So it's something that we've put on the books and we haven't used. I expect that will occur again this year. But just in case, it's a contingency and being a law, technically it does require a public hearing. So we would like to set that public hearing for next board meeting, March 16th. Village elections, I'm gonna tell you about how we are gonna be doing paper ballots and why next, March 15th. And there's also a resolution of support for a grant application to Greenway on the part of the Town of Red Hook. And they're looking for resolutions of support from the other municipalities, the two villages. So are there any public comments on agenda items? No surprise there, but if you have any, okay, thank you. Moving on. Budget modifications, we discussed this in the workshop. I think the Board understands what we're doing. It's nine cents and $600. Is there a motion to adopt these budget modifications?
So moved.
And second. So Schneider, Ezraudi, any discussion? I just think it's good that we've been getting in the habit of doing this every month as we need to.
Yes, because you're not making big ones at the end of the year. You're tinkering as you go along.
With that discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the public hearing. Is there a motion to set a public hearing on the tax cap override law for Wednesday, March 16th at 7:00 PM here at Watzdepeister Hall?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
That was Ezraudi, Schneider. Any discussion? It's a public hearing. I hope you'll come and say what you may want to say, but I don't know. I think everyone understands what this is, so we'll see. But it is a board meeting, so maybe you want to come anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've set the public hearing for March 16th, 7:00 PM.
Yeah, and it just... To come in here, I think for the last five years, we have not over... We haven't actually overridden the tax cap. The tax cap has been in general less than 2%. It's actually been in general more like 1% to 1.5%. And that's pretty challenging. One of the reasons that we don't override it is that there are some dire consequences to overriding it, including the fact that the villagers would lose their star exemptions. So we're aware that this can be very costly to individuals, and that's why we work very hard.
If you override the tax cap, we lose our star? Why?
It's state law. Governor Cuomo had...
I wasn't aware of that.
Yep.
Because that's the only thing saving some people's asses out there, is the star.
That's why we talk.
I just thought it was rebate check that they give you on the star. You don't actually lose your star exemption. You lose the rebate check that they give back.
Well, that also, but let's save that discussion for public comment. The mayor's gonna lose his place completely, so.
I can't have that.
Right. It's hard enough as it is. All right. So Village Elections, this is just to remind residents that the Village Elections will take place on Tuesday, March 15th, from noon to 9:00 PM next door at the Firehouse. There are two trustee seats up for election. Those currently held by Trustee Schneider and Deputy Mayor Major. The big news here is that we're gonna be using paper ballots. The old lever machines that we've all been enjoying for recent election cycles are no more. And I'm gonna read now from the New York Conference of Mayors' update about this. "The 2015 calendar year marks the last year. Villages will be authorized to use lever voting machines in their elections. The law that allows for the use of lever machines expired on December 31st, 2015, leaving villages with two options for recording votes: state-approved optical scan machines or hand-counting paper ballots." So in Village Elections, we've seen turnouts of 70, of 100, maybe up around 144. It's around 100 usually. So Clerk Bruno has done some research, looked into the prices of basically renting and transporting and being responsible for the state-approved optical scanners. And it's a significant cost difference. It's something like $5 per voter instead of $2 per voter. So we're gonna go with paper ballots. Seems prudent. And we're gonna have a big locked box that's gonna come from Dutchess County and we'll have our regular election inspectors there. So it'll be a little different than every other year, but democracy will still be in action here in Tivoli. So I just wanted to let everyone know the paper ballots are coming. And regular business number four, resolution of support for a grant application to Hudson River Valley Greenway Red Hook Community Preservation Project Plan Update by the Town of Red Hook. Now, excuse me. Just thought I'd read a little more from... All right. "The Town of Red Hook is applying to Greenway for grants under the Greenway Community's Grant Program for a project entitled Red Hook Community Preservation Project Plan Update, to be located in the Village of Tivoli, Village of Red Hook, and Town of Red Hook. Whereas the grant application requires the applicant municipality to obtain the approval and/or endorsement of the governing body of the municipality or municipalities in which the project will be located. Therefore, be it now resolved that the governing board of the Village of Tivoli hereby does endorse the Town of Red Hook's application for a grant in the amount of $10,000 under the Greenway Grant Program for this project. The total project cost estimated not to exceed $20,000 and required 50% match to be funded by in-kind contributions." And I would add, from the Town of Red Hook.
Yes.
Not much. Is there a motion to pass this resolution of support?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Schneider, Ezraudi, any discussion? We wish the town good luck with this grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a comment on this. The Community Preservation Fund was passed in... Act was passed in 2007 by referendum. We created a project plan in 2010, which has funded approximately, in combination with matching funds from the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the town... The fund balance from the Community Preservation Fund and scenic Hudson, it has purchased about 1,500 acres of easements on operating farms at a total cost of about $6 million. And that has brought the amount of farmland that's protected in the Town of Red Hook to about 4,500 acres out of a total of 9,500 acres. So it's almost half of the farmland in Red Hook will be forever operating farms. It's a great program. This new project plan is focusing on some additional resources to be protected, in particular connectivity and biodiversity, which may seem strange. But these are to keep forests and wetlands and streams free of pollutants, to limit the amount of development that goes along those. The benefit of that is better water supply, reduced lime tick population, and in general, a healthier habitat. So this, it is... We're required by the enabling legislation to review and update this project plan at least once every five years. So this one is sort of timing out at the end of May. So we have to get the update done. To get that update done, we're hiring Green Plan headed up by Ted Fink to help us actually write the language of the plan. And the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which is a group of seven people, will be revising the list of projects, the priorities on those projects.
Thank you. Trustee Ezraudi, that's a lot of good information. Thank you. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, March 16th at 7:00 PM, with the workshop proceeding at 6:00 PM here at the historic Watzdepeister Hall. And the Board will have its regular workshop on March 9th at 7:00 PM. Committee reports. Trustee Ezraudi.
There's the low-set program, we're counting points, right? Coming. And once those points are established and reviewed by the Fire Department and the Village Board, we'll have an amount of money which will be put into the low-set fund for firefighters. We put in, for anybody who earns 50 points or greater in a calendar year, $500 is put into an investment account with RBC Work Management and Health, invested in Health there until they reach 65, when they can receive that as tax-deferred money. Planning and zoning, the Planning Board met, what did we say, Robin twice? For the Board Workshop and the meeting to review a couple of applications. One for a division of property at the north end of town. Another for a... We're working on a building which is, used to be the tattoo parlor on Broadway and...
The garage.
The garage, the McGrinder House. There used to be a chicken coop back there and they're replacing it with a garage. Those meetings are open. They occur on the first and third Mondays of the month and second and fourth Mondays of the month. So feel free to come and know what your neighbors are doing. We're also in the process of upgrading the parking code. We're looking for money to get that done, but we moved ahead on that. I'll tell you about the wells. I love to do... The Ballot Well was not being used this month. The well was off about seven days, but generally was pumping about 12,000 gallons an hour? The two PW well was off, the five PW well was off. The four PE and 10 PE wells were on all month and pumping at about 18,000 to 19,000 gallons. And the Whittymark well was pumping at 22,000, which is a good output for it. The water tower was staying at the 166 to 169 feet, that you like for proper pressure. And is it true that we had no water breaks in this period of time?
My own winter.
And the water was tested at two routine samples were required and there were no problems with the well.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraudi. Trustee Schneider.
I'm gonna start with the Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report. I know you're in the age of your seats right now. Okay, so for the period of January 1 through January 31st, 2016, total of 26 charges were received, charges disposed, total of 16. $1,126 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. Of those, I'm just gonna take a moment and note that seven of those were actually related to overnight parking. So this is a reminder for those of you in that situation, please be aware. Parking permits, you should follow up with the Clerk's Office and make sure that you obtain one if that's something that pertains to you. You can maybe avoid some of those charges there. Otherwise, just wanted to touch on the shared services process that we're going through for highway services. The grant that we received from Dutchess County for the Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook, and Village of Tivoli. Obviously, we've already gone through the initial phase, so we're well into the actual execution of that plan. And we finalized the request for proposal and that was submitted to the public for response. The next meeting is scheduled for February 22nd, which is this upcoming Monday, at the Town of Red Hook Highway Garage. And that's it for 9:30 in the morning. Just want to know that those meetings are open to the public. However, there is no opportunity for public comment at that forum. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know if the deputy mayor was here, she'd be talking about the library. And if you haven't seen it, poke your head in downstairs because the renovations of the east room are underway and it looks good, doesn't it?
It's gorgeous.
Really, really good. It does credit to the building. So always happy to have them downstairs. And moving on, let's see. Well, last month they talked about code enforcement here in the village. All those things, abandoned vehicles, brush piles, siding falling off a garage, all that sort of stuff. And we have sent out letters. We did a round and there's another round coming out. These sorts of things are the law, either in the state of New York or in the Village of Tivoli. And it may not feel nice to sort of be nagged by the village about these things, but it's our job to uphold them. And I hope that people feel, without being told, that they sort of have obligations to their neighbors, to keep up your properties. And, you know, so if you happen to receive one of these letters, it says exactly what needs to be remedied. If there are any questions, you can contact the village or the code enforcement officer, Steve Cole, the Town of Red Hook. The number's on the letter. You have four weeks to resolve or remedy the violation. And hopefully you'll just do that and won't have to go any further. So this is going on and it's something we take very seriously. And just want to say that, you know, round two letters have just gone out, so.
Can I interject for just one second? I just wanted to note that it's very interesting. I'm sure that several of you saw me knocking on your door earlier this month to get your signature on my petition so I could be on the ballot. And one of the things that I tried to do was ask folks what they wanted to see. What are we doing well? What can we do better? And I heard a lot of feedback in regard to rebuilding the sense of community, rekindling the pride in our community. We've got a lot of longtime residents who would really like to see us bring this village back to what it once was, where properties were kept up because we were proud to be part of a community like this. And so just wanted to piggyback on what Mayor Griffith said and encourage people to look at it as an opportunity to respond to those letters and start rebuilding. It's a great place to jump off and see if we can generate some more.
Right. And as I said last month, the village has a similar duty to take care of the village assets and keep the streets up and everything else looking good. And we're working hard on that. We've got some estimates for doing some repairs and renovations in this building as well. So, you know, let's all come together and keep things looking nice.
It's a great start. Momentum there.
Yeah. Another thing, I was contacted by Panda and they need another rep or an alternate. It would be better if they can find a full-time representative rather than the alternate. But if you have interest doing either, their board meets once a month at 5:00 PM on second Wednesdays. They're looking for people who have a background and/or passion for fundraising, grant writing, and promotion. And if you think you might be that person, please contact David Miller at dhmnny@aul.com. D H M N Y at a o l dot com. And an easy rep. Well, we're getting towards spring. It's time to talk about the community garden. And the plots are available. We've got 20 plots in the garden. I'm pleased to say I'm beginning to lose track of how many seasons this will be because it's been there for a while.
At least four.
At least four, yes. So $30 gets you an eight-by-12 plot for the season. It's a lot of fun. If you think that square footage is a little much, get a partner, share. You do have to be a Tivoli resident to take advantage of this. And if you would like a plot in the community garden or to learn more, you can send an email to tivoli community garden at gmail. Or you can come to the Clerk's Office and we have the forms there. And you need to make your check for $30 out to the Village of Tivoli. All the fees that are raised go to maintaining the fence. The last few years, we've done a campaign of making raised beds for the entire garden. I think we have, this would be the third season in which we're doing that. We've got a few more. By the end of this, you know, by this spring, the entire garden is gonna have these beautiful 10-inch raised white oak beds. So I'll be signing up tomorrow, so community garden. Also, last month at this meeting, I was soliciting resumes for a treasurer. And I'm pleased to say that we found someone who will be fulfilling the treasurer's duties here. And I want to welcome Bonnie Day to the Tivoli team. She's off to a great start and we look forward to having her around. So thank you to Bonnie Day. And the last thing I'll say, there hasn't been a whole lot of reason to talk about police in the village lately. We, you know, I think we've seen the success of the laws we passed last summer and some coordinated patrols earlier in the fall. But I just want to reiterate to people that the village does contract with the county sheriff's department that if you have an incident for which you need to call the police, the number is 486-3800. So just be aware. I know there are a number of police agencies in the area. Sometimes people aren't sure who to call. If it's an emergency, you call 911. But Tivoli does contract with the county sheriff's office, 486-3800. And with that, we'll turn it over to public comment. Mr. Christie?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things I want to touch on with the Firehouse. Firehouse is beginning, is in the starting phases of being renovated a little. We have Jane Sullivan in there doing some of the carpentry work and stuff that needed to be done. So that's progressing along. Springtime, we'll work on getting the rest of the building on the outside taken care of. Other thing I want to bring up about parking, you said about getting village permits. Just like the village to remind the people that they give the village the permits to not to park in the yellow zones because those are for when the firemen come up on the emergency scene. There's been the last couple of weeks, we've had people park there overnight inside the yellow zones. We have a breakfast coming up, March 6th. It's from 8:00 to 12:00. Flyers will be out all over the place, and they'll be on Panda once I give them the, I just got done doing the flyers today. The other thing would be, we're also gonna be sending out our annual donation letter. It should be going out within the first two weeks of March, barring no problems.
Tank is that breakfast take place?
What was that?
What time is the breakfast?
8:00 to 12:00. That's firehouse. And then, that's what I got done as far as, that's what's done so far as far as fire department and stuff. One issue, one thing I wanted to bring up that has nothing to do with fire department is the water. It tastes like bleach. Pure bleach, you turn it on, you smell it, it's like really strong. Is there a reason why they're overchloridating, or is it because I'm up on the beginning of the line, or what it is, or boy, it's terrible? I mean, I wouldn't even drink it, I'd give the dogs, not dogs, I'm serious, because animals aren't supposed to have chlorine. So it's just, I want to find out what the issue is with the water. Other than that, I'm done.
Yes, sir.
Couple things. The barge shuttle, is that place over on Spring Road or wherever, is that its designated stopping?
Pine Street.
Pine Street?
Yeah.
Only?
Yes. You're seeing it, well, and by the monument.
Okay, but not right here at the stop sign?
No.
Okay, because I've seen, yeah. That's got, that's...
They're stopping and picking people up?
Yeah, that was sitting there, I don't know what it was, a couple of weeks ago for, it was just sitting there for quite a while, had the door open. There's four or five of us sitting there behind it.
It was taking, it was taking on passengers or letting people off there?
Something was going on, had the door, yeah, it was either waiting for someone in the laundromat or dropping someone off, yeah.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
There's a house on the other side of North Road, not the one right on the corner, the guy keeps up nice, there's one just beyond it, a little brown one. It's gotta be around, it's just a wreck. So you got stuff hanging out of the mailbox.
North Road?
Or is it, just past it, heading down that, sort of heading down the hill to the river like?
Not Broadway.
What the hell, Woods Road?
Woods Road.
I didn't know where I lived. Just past Woods Road, not the one right on the corner of Woods. But I think the next one down, it's a little brown one, so it's close to the road.
Right, right, okay.
There's trash hanging out of the mailbox, two plywood, I mean, just, it's a, that's one that needed a little...
Got it.
Maybe already did send a letter there. And the parking lot over here, but behind like Panzer, is that a village lot, a dirt lot?
Yeah.
Because that's like no man's land in World War I. Have you been through it? There's holes in there.
Yeah.
We were walking through there the other night, no lighting, someone with high heels, you know, they're gonna sprain it, you know. I mean, if we can't blacktop it, we can at least, you know, at least in the spring, you know, we're not planning snow now.
Yes, absolutely. No, it's our responsibility to fix that, those potholes. And also, we have started looking into improving some lighting back there.
Okay.
Definitely. We know there's a need, but we need to move a little faster.
Yeah, those holes are around this, so I guess that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, guys.
Any other comments from the public? So the, a large figure in the, in the history of the village passed away last weekend. Arnold S. Pease was, was court justice, village justice for 25 years, from 1975 to 2000. And he passed away last weekend. We want to send our thoughts to the family, and we'd like to ask the board if there's a motion to adjourn this meeting in memory of the Honorable Arnold S. Pease.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned in the memory of the Honorable Arnold S. Pease. It is 7:37. Thank you.